It's really quiet, so I'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. I appreciate everyone being here this evening. That covers item one. We do have a quorum of our board team here. Our second item is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Jill Fulgham. She's the Associate Pastor at Southland Baptist Church, and she's going to lead us in our invocation. Thank you for being here.
Do pray with me. Loving and gracious God, you're the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all of your blessings and for each child who's a part of our community. We're thankful for teachers and administrators who work tirelessly to provide a positive place for our students to learn and to grow. We ask that you bless them abundantly, that you give them wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with this board in their discussions and their decisions. Help them to be wise in the decisions made for the good of all those who have trusted them with their confidence and their leadership. Lord, grant to each of us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and all that we say. All glory be to you, loving God, now and always. We pray all of these things in the name of Christ your Son.
Thank you, Pastor. We appreciate you being here. Our next item is item three. We're honored this evening to have some students from Altaloma Elementary. As they come forward, I'll introduce you to all of them. We have Jaden Abila. We have Emily Flores. We have Dominique Guerra. We have Natalie Mendoza and Victoria Vasquez. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Macy. And we have Macy Martinez. So if y'all will stand, we'll do the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Good job, guys. Thank y'all so much. It's always a good time when we have students back to lead us in our pledges. We appreciate Ms. Farmer and her team being here. Thank y'all so much. We have a student showcase this evening. We have the choir from Lakeview High School Choir led under the direction of John Howard, and they're going to do a couple of numbers for us, I believe. So thank y'all for being here. to all of us? I know they'll love to be... Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you for having us. This is Brooklyn Ozga. She's a senior.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, just come across. That a girl? And stand there, yeah.
Annalysia?
so I think I'll do that now. Hey, Annalysia. Good evening and welcome.
Immerlin's new.
As President of the Board of Trustees, San Angelo Independent School District, I'd
She moved here from Kansas.
Oh, good. like to welcome all of you to our meeting, those of you who are present at tonight's
This is Raquel.
board meeting, and I also would like to welcome those of you who are watching the tape of
Becca Love is a senior.
our meeting, this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4.
Don Mark Hernandez. Andrea.
We appreciate your interest in our students.
And Amber Carr.
Okay. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required Thank y'all. (Applause) by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda this evening. Additionally, prior to taking any of our votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item, whether it's on our agenda or not, should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of the school district's permanent legal record. In order that the tape may adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others may be speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting and to thank you for taking the time to join us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. So the item I just referred to, which reminded me that I need to read that, is public comments. Do we have anyone wishing tonight to make comments to our board team on items not on our agenda? I don't think we have anybody coming forward, so with that, we'll go to item six, which is our recognitions, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Highsmith. Thank you, Jamie.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Lehman, and good evening, and Dr. Detloff, Mr. Lehman, and members of the board. It is a great privilege this evening to introduce to you, members of the DESK Board, who are here this evening. We've invited them to come and be recognized. DESK stands for Donate Educational Supplies for Kids, and DESK was founded in 2003 by Eric Wilson due to the growing need he saw for assistance for families in obtaining school supplies. So for each of the past 12 years, DESK has tirelessly raised funds for needed supplies for the students of San Angelo ISD. They have done this by applying for grants, sponsoring golf tournaments, hosting silent auctions, and providing an ongoing means for our community members to donate both money and supplies. The DESK Board members represent several local businesses, as well as a solid cross-section of our community. The total of this year's DESK contributions to San Angelo ISD is $58,548 and 48 cents. Each campus received an amount of that money based on student economic need. And I'm pleased to tell you that, over the years, DESK has raised a total exceeding $478,000 for the students in San Angelo ISD. The district is extremely grateful to our DESK Board members, all of them, and many of them are here with us this evening. And DESK Board members, if you would come forward as I call your name, and Dr. Detloff will assist in presenting your certificate, then if you would stay here at the front so that we might get a picture, we would greatly appreciate it. Eric Wilson. Well, Mrs. Wilson, we have your certificate and your certificate also. Thank you so much for being here. And Dr. Detloff, here's the other Wilson certificate. So thank you so much. Okay. DESK Vice President Vicki Lozo, who is Senior Vice President, Marketing and Member Services of First Community Federal Credit Union. The DESK Treasurer Jaclyn Ochoa, CPA and Assistant Internal Auditor at Armstrong, Bacchus, and Company. Boomer Kingston, Operations Manager, Town Square Media. Sandy Rojas, Community News Desk, San Angelo Standard Times. Ella Nichols, School Service Worker, San Angelo ISD. Ella works at Austin and Fort Concho Elementary Schools. Yes, I do want to recognize those who were not able to be here in attendance with us this evening, and we'll name those and express our appreciation for those persons. Johnny Garcia, the Membership Manager at Sam's Club. Elizabeth Joest and Kathy Self, sponsors of the Central High School Key Club. David Wagner, News Director at KLST and K-SAN. Cheryl Book, Business Development at First Community Federal Credit Union. And David O'Shero, National Account Executive, Dr. Pepper and Snapple Group. Would you all join me in expressing our sincere appreciation to the DESK Board?
Oh, congratulations. Thank y'all. Thank you. An amazing total. Thank you so much, definitely. Thank you. Yes, thank you so much. Thank you a million times over. Diane, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Highsmith. Our next item is item seven, our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes?
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindell and a second from Mr. Parker to approve the minutes of our August 3, 2015, special budget workshop, our August 10, 2015, financing pre-agenda workshop, and our August 24, 2015, regular board meeting. Are there comments or questions from our board team concerning our minutes or any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item eight, reports. We received our student enrollment report. This says the fifth day of school, but we actually, in our Friday facts last week, we got the fourth Monday, so we're well into... This is, I guess, the 25th day of school. If we started, yeah, because last Monday's report was the 20th day, and we have seven more students than we had this time last year, so that's good news for our district, especially considering there's a little bit of economic unrest as a result of the oil And then Ms. Hollahan's going to do item B under eight, which is an update on academic progress.
I do want to share with you an update on the CTE, Career and Technology Education. I know a few months ago, we talked about a new... Actually, maybe last month, we talked about a new... It was called an Emergency Texas Education Code Update. And what it is, it's saying that they took away the limits of a child wanting to enroll in dual credit, so a ninth grader, 10th grader, 11th grader, or 12th grader could enroll. And that impacted us. And so what happened was, on August, I believe it was really the first day of school, 24th, we got a new ruling, and Joy Gay and Howard College got their wheels going and said, "How is this going to impact us this year? We have one week to get this completed." Joy said, "Shelley, what do you want to do?" I said, "Let's go for it." Well, I want to share some of the numbers up here so you can see those. We have 1,286 students enrolled at Howard in academic and career tech dual credit. We have 1,112 students enrolled in at least one career and tech dual credit class, which is an increase of 366 students from last year. That's how it impacted us. Students with both a career and tech and core course and academic core course, we have 147, and students with a core course only, that is 173, and that is up 38 students from last year. And students in the 10th grade, you can see, 307. We would have had a slight increase anyway, but with allowing our 10th graders to enroll, it just bumped us up. And Joy Gay, our career and tech director, said they handed out 400 and, I believe, 83 applications in one week, and she said the stopping was getting those applications back in with all the appropriate signatures. And she said, "Shelley, we got to figure this out. We got to figure out how to get them in without a parent's signature, so we're going to work on that and make it maybe part of the enrollment process next year, so students that want to take a dual credit course can take a dual credit course." We're excited about these numbers, and we're excited about the partnership with Howard College. Do you have any questions?
Questions for Shelley?
Thank you.
Thank you. And Shelley mentioned this, but we certainly appreciate our partners at Howard College as well as Angelo State and our continuing education courses, our dual credit courses that are supplied by each one of those institutions. Colonel Vedder, I don't think we have anything from Goodfellow. Okay, thank you. We appreciate your presence and for all you do at Goodfellow to help our students. Our next item is item nine. Consider the naming of Altaloma Elementary Library, and this is a second hearing for that, and Dr. Detloff's going to mention this.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. We have Gina Farmer, Principal of Altaloma Elementary, with us this evening, and she is going to help us honor Sergeant Corby Kennedy by the naming of the school library, and this is the second discussion that we seek your approval on this evening. So I'll turn it over to Gina.
Back. We would like to ask the board to vote to approve to name our Altaloma library in memory of the late Sergeant Corby Kennedy. He did attend to Altaloma, and we feel like that this would be something that we could do to honor him.
Any question, Mr. Parker?
No, I'm just seeing if we need to make a motion. If we do, I move to approve.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Do we have any board comments or questions concerning the naming of the library at Altaloma? Thanks for bringing this to us. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
What a, you know, great way for us to honor a great man, so we appreciate that. Other questions or comments or any public comment from our audience? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Ms. Farmer. Our next item, and we're going to remove aye, but our next item is our consent item, so we need a motion to approve consent items A through H and J, if we could.
Move for approval.
Second.
So we have a motion from Mr. Dindell and a second from Mr. Parker to approve items A through H and item J, so we're going to discuss item I independently. Item A is to consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel for school year 1516. Item B is to consider our quarterly investment report ending August 31 of 2015. Item C is to consider our annual portfolio report ending August 31 of 2015. Item D is to consider our 4H as an extracurricular activity and adjunct staff status for the Tom Green County Extension Facility, excuse me, faculty members. Item E is to consider PDAS certified appraisers. Item F is to consider the Health Advisory Council for 2015-2016. Item G is to consider bid number 15-017 for first aid and nursing supplies. Item H is to consider bid number 15-018 for athletic trainer supplies, and item J is to ratify the administration's action in sale of properties. I think it's just one property that we're selling in conjunction with the city as a result of delinquent taxes. So those are our items A through H and item J. Is there any comment from our board team concerning any of those items? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 10I, and that's to consider a firm to appeal the state comptroller's annual property value study. And I think Gerard...
Go ahead and pull that, just for discussion purposes of what they do and why they do this. I guess, Jeff, could you explain more like what Limebarger does for us, for the district?
Thank you, and good evening. I think we all understand that our property taxes are driven by the values that are set by the local appraisal district. And of course, the higher the property values, the more local taxes that all the entities collect. I think everyone understands that. But I think what people need to understand is there is a difference between the way schools operate and other taxing entities operate with the property values. We know that in the city and the county, as values increase, as they generally do over time, and I know there's exceptions, especially when you get into mineral districts, and they fluctuate wildly from year to year, but generally, over time, you'll see that values increase, and cities and counties can leave their rates the same and generate more revenue. But school funding system does not work that way. The school funding formula system is a shared commitment between local taxes and state revenue. And it's pretty simple in its concept. As the values go up, we collect more local taxes. But the shared commitment operates this way. As we collect more local taxes, the state reduces their share of school funding. And I'm not going to make it so simplistic that it's a dollar-for-dollar swap, but it's not far off. Okay? And so, you know, the question is, who benefits from this relationship? Well, listen, as we collect more taxes, the state sends us less money. And so it results in a savings to the state budget. So a great question for your state politicians is, where do those savings go? And I'm going to tell you, they take the savings from the local school districts, and they don't put it back into the school system. They go and they spend it... We know that in the city and the county, as values increase, as they generally do over time, and I know there's exceptions, especially when you get into mineral districts, and they fluctuate wildly from year to year, but generally, over time, you'll see that values increase, and cities and counties can leave their rates the same and generate more revenue. But school funding system does not work that way. The school funding formula system is a shared commitment between local taxes and state revenue. And it's pretty simple in its concept. As the values go up, we collect more local taxes. But the shared commitment operates this way. As we collect more local taxes, the state reduces their share of school funding. And I'm not going to make it so simplistic that it's a dollar-for-dollar swap, but it's not far off, okay? And so, you know, the question is, who benefits from this relationship? Well, listen, as we collect more taxes, the state sends us less money. And so, it results in a savings to the state budget. So, a great question for your local, or for your state politicians, is where do those savings go? And I'm going to tell you, they take the savings from the local school districts, and they don't put it back into the school system. They go and they spend it elsewhere in their general fund budget. And so, you know, really, the state government is the sole benefactor of rising values and higher local tax collections. Which kind of brings us to this property value study that we're asking you to approve. There's 253 county appraisal districts across the state who are charged with setting local property values used for the various taxing entities in the 254 counties. I think there's one combination up in the panhandle. And their work is kind of monitored, or scrutinized, or overseen by the comptroller's property tax division in Austin. And there's a real interesting dynamic at play there, because on one hand, you have all the state politicians that really hammer the taxing entities for high property taxes. But on the other hand, they kind of sic their own arm of their government, the property tax division, owned to the appraisal districts, kind of requiring them to get values to a certain expected level, or be penalized. We get penalized. And so, you know, and schools are easy targets, because our property tax rates are always the highest on the bill. And if the values that the state believes should be set do not, if our local values do not meet the state's expectations, and they have to fall within a certain acceptable range, I think there's a 95% threshold, then schools are penalized in the school funding formula. And right now, San Angelo is in the second year of a hold harmless that we don't talk about a whole lot. So, our tax appraisal office is really under some pressure to get values up to meet the state's expectations. Well, what Limebarger does is, they come in and they do a study of the local values, and they appeal the values that the state has said we should have, and try to get the value set on our local values. And they have about 100 clients in the state, and they're very good, I think "very good" is probably an understatement, they're very good at what they do. And so, what we're asking Limebarger to do is come in and make a property value appeal, and hopefully, get our values set at local level and not state, and we can avoid the penalties in the school funding formulas. They do get paid for their services. Once the values are reset, they determine how much state aid we gained from their services, and we give them 10% of that amount. I believe the last year or so, I'm kind of going off the top of my head, so I think I'm close, they probably generated extra $820,000 in state funding this last time they did it, and we paid them $82,000. And so, I don't know what the results will be this time, but the values that get set from this appeal will impact us in the 2016-17 school year. So, it's very important that we stay ahead of the game, make sure that our values are set at local values and not where the state thinks they are, and Limebarger is the guys that can do this. So, I know some of y'all may have more experience or more comments about Limebarger, but that's kind of the gist of what they do, Mr. Gallegos.
Jeff, how many, do all the districts appeal their, all of them don't?
I don't know.
Oh, you don't know, okay.
I don't know. I don't know, if your own formula, I don't know why you wouldn't. And there are some appeal firms that specialize in minerals, and there's some that specialize in something else. And, you know, I would say, probably, yes. Most of them probably do, they know what's going on.
Mr. Parker?
So, I'm going to probably be restating some of the things you just said, but just so taxpayers understand this. Just because the property taxes go up, or someone's property taxes in our school district goes up, does not mean that the school district, us, is getting more money. We just get more locally, less from the state funds. But the state also says that if our appraisers are not raising the property values to the level that they think they need to be, even though many people in our district feel like their property values are set very high, the state sends people here that says, many times, and say, "They're not high enough." And if we don't, if our local rates are not in the 95% range or something, as to what the state says they should be, then we're going to be penalized, and we've already been, even though our rates have been rising the past few years, we've been getting notices from the state that they're not high enough. And so, we've now hired a firm, a law firm, Limebarger's, who we're talking about, it's a law firm that specializes in this, to come in and evaluate, and where they see that our local tax appraisers are being accurate, and the state is not being accurate, that they appeal that to the state to say, "State, your rates are too high. What our local appraisers have done are the correct rates, and if they're able to save that money, then they get a percentage of that, we give back to them." But we locally, I think what the taxpayers need to understand is, we're really fighting for the taxpayers to try to keep their rates from going up, and are hiring a law firm to really appeal that, to try to keep those rates down. Is that correct?
I think you probably should have done this presentation, that's very well said. That's excellent.
Jeff, go ahead, Gerard.
Well, the new, I guess, the deal that the state wants to pass now is the state homestead exemption, the 15,000 to the 25,000. How will that affect this right here, I mean?
I don't believe it's going to affect the appeal process, but we know in November, there's going to be an amendment on the ballot to increase the state mandated exemption from 15,000 to $25,000. We've been directed from the state funding people that we go ahead and anticipate that passing, and then the appraisal district will send out new bills that have the $25,000 homestead exemption included. So, I don't know, you want to add some more to that, Mr. Archer, possibly?
Well, there's a loss of revenue locally, looks like that would be good for our state support to pick up the difference.
Yes, we've been promised that whatever loss of revenue happens or occurs locally will be made up with additional state aid. We have to trust them on that. Yes.
Other questions for Dr. Bright? Or comments?
Yeah, one, I think, just one clarification on my part, and that's, as Dr. Bright mentioned, you know, we have to appraise within 95% of value, so if you don't appraise to that value, then, and again, the comptroller's office is appraising one value, and people here locally who understand our economy much better are coming up with our local value. And we have a very experienced group, in fact, we've got an item on our agenda later that appoints people to, or elects people to that appraisal district. But everyone that's a part of that's very experienced, and we believe that certainly they do a lot better job of determining values locally than the state comptroller does, because she has, they have a vested interest statewide to increase the amount of money that's collected locally. And then the other thing, I guess, is that, and I think most of the taxpayers understand this, but their taxes for SEISD have actually declined significantly in the last five or six years. Initially, they declined because the state put a cap on districts, but then, since that time, our contribution to our M&amp;O, I mean, our bonded, our bonded, our bonded, I can't say that, bonded, our bonded indebtedness is less now, the collection for that's less now than it was two or three years ago. So, we've actually decreased the amount of tax. But many people that I talk to say, "Well, my tax bill's still going up, and we don't control what the appraisal is, we control the rate." So, the school district sets the rate, just like any other taxing entity would, and then the appraisal district determines the value.
Very good, Mr. Lehman. And yes, we control the rate, but the state also has the system set up so that we really can't decrease the rate, or we get beat up on the funding formulas as well.
That's right.
And, you know, I think we did some, a little scratch work on the side during budget. I think that if the homestead exemption passes, which we anticipate it will, I think our local taxpayers will have about $3 million less in taxes. When you look at our M&amp;O plus the debt, $3 million less than what we would have paid if it does not pass. So, it does generate some savings for our local taxpayers that should be made up with state aid.
And I had one final comment, and that's that Limebarger, Grogan, Blair, and Sampson's has worked for us for a number of years in this same capacity. So, as our board notes indicate, since 1997, they've helped us on a number of occasions, and during that timeframe, they've reduced our values that the comptroller had by over $1 billion, and approximately, that equates to a little over $17 million worth of additional state aid for our school district. So, it's well worth our board considering this, and as Dr. Bright mentioned, I don't know of any district that would choose not to challenge the comptroller's evaluations of property in their independent district. So, I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal from Limebarger, Grogan, Blair, and Sampson LLP for representation of the San Angelo Independent School District's tax values for an appeal of the comptroller's values from 2015 property value study. Do we have a second? So, we have a motion from Mr. Lehman, and a second from Mr. Archer. Do we have any further board comments or questions?
You know, I was biting my lip, but I'm, as Gerard mentioned, the proposal for the amendment to the Constitution has several other moving parts to it. The last sentence of that proposal is for a prohibition on a real estate transfer, a prohibition on a tax for real estate transfer. And that's kind of a new thing, that's the legislature wanting to avoid a tax on the transfer of real estate, like, most other states have. Colorado's is 1%, you sell a $100,000 house, you pay $1,000 on the real estate transaction. So, I don't really know where that's going, it has no effect on property taxes as we move, you know, as we move forward, but just, my comment is to be aware that that prohibition is, will be there, because this will pass. Who wouldn't vote for an extra, you know, homestead exemption? But there's a reason why they put that in there, and something else will come down that's related to that prohibition on real estate transaction taxes.
I think out of the 50 states, I think 38 of them have that 1% transaction tax.
Thanks, good comments. Any public comment concerning our motion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, all opposed indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider our bills, accounts, and financial statements for August 2015. Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Archer, and a second from Mr. Dindell, to consider our bills, accounts, and financial statements for the month of August 2015. Any board comments or questions?
Mr. Lehman, just a comment to our viewers, that in our effort at transparency, we provide all of these reports online, saisd.org, you go to the board tab right up in the top.
Thanks, Mr. Archer. Other comments or questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, all opposed indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is Item 12, to consider Head Start Implementation Plan changes for school year 2015-2016, and Ms. Taunton's here to help us with that. Probably a really good time, while she's coming up, to mention it, and remind everybody that we did, in fact, have, we have a pre-agenda workshop, and we cover most of these items in greater detail than we do here this evening. But Rachel doesn't get to do that, because she has to present at our public meeting for some reason, so thanks for being here, Rachel.
We could try and change that.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. I'm here to present a couple of items. Changes to the implementation plan. Every year, we review and make changes, and we have three sections of the implementation plan with changes. Our Ursa Plan, which is our enrollment, recruitment, selection, and attendance. Most of these had to change, and there'll be more, because we have lots of sections. And one of the big changes that we're having to make in all sections is the grantee change to recipient, and this was a federal government change, and the delegate change to subrecipient. So, all of the forms, everything that included, where it talked about the grantee, and where it talked about the delegate agency, is now being changed to reflect the recipient and subrecipient. So, that's what most of the changes are. We do have one, a couple of other changes to the Ursa Plan, and it was added back. In the past, they could use the 1040 as proof of income to determine eligibility, that's on page seven. And for a while there, we were not allowed to use that, and now, we're allowed to use that again. So, that's been added back into the plan. And then, the other change in that section is the three-day consecutive absences was changed to four, and a report has to be submitted to the Ursa manager from COG on the 10th of the month. And most of, all of our reports go to COG on the 10th of the month, and that was another addition that was made to the Ursa. Any questions on?
Is that a federal change as well, a program change, or is that a?
No, it's just a...
A local requirement from COG?
A local requirement for COG.
Okay. Because most of these are just language changes, but that's an increased obligation on our part, I guess?
Yes, sir.
With the local, our friends at COG?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Program Governance, which is 1305.50, again, the recipient and subrecipient changes. We've always had a liaison for the subrecipient that attends, that is part of the, is a member of the Executive Board for COG, that's always been in place, they just made a clarification and put it in the section. And then, there are clarifications, that's on page nine. Clarification steps for staff recruitment and selection procedures, we've always had those, they've just clarified them and put them in the plan, pages 12 and 13. And then, in the section of 1305.52, the Human Resources Management, again, the recipient and subrecipient are the changes. We've always done staff qualifications and criminal background checks, that's on page five. They just added it to the plan for more clarification, and also for our staff and volunteer health requirements, on pages 17 and 18. And those are the only changes so far in these sections, there'll probably be more as they go through and make all the changes in the other sections, but there's several sections to the implementation plan.
Thanks, Rachel, we appreciate that, and the detail involved in your job on a regular basis, so. Questions or comments for Head Start Implementation Plan Changes for School Year 2015-2016? Do we have a motion to approve? Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindell, and a second from Mr. Parker, to approve Head Start Implementation Plan Changes for School Year 2015-2016. Other comments or questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, all opposed indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider San Angelo ISD's Early Head Start and Head Start Emergency Response Plans, and this is also Ms. Taunton's item.
Yes, every year, we have to review the emergency response plans for all three centers. It's pretty much the same, it's just a guide. We provide training, we're required to do the fire drills and the evacuation, not the evacuation, the lockdowns and the severe weather procedures. Actually, in Head Start, we have to do all three of those within the first week of school. That's a Head Start requirement. That's a Head Start requirement. Also, the only additions to the plans were just the staff roster that's located in the back, as new staff come in, we have to change that and update that. Also, as AJ reviewed the plans that I have to send to him and see if he has any suggestions, he suggested or recommended that we add the staff responsibilities from the superintendent down to Head Start staff, and so we put those in there and included those, and gave clarification as to the responsibilities between the district and community agencies. We do our part at the center, but as soon as the agencies come onsite, then everything's turned over to them, and we follow what they say. And so the emergency response plans are just a guide, you know, we can never be prepared enough, and so we just have to have something in place and train the staff. The plans go home with all the parents as well, we have to send them out.
Yeah, and there's a separate plan for each campus, you know, so, and a very detailed plan, I might add. So thanks for your work on that. You mentioned AJ, tell everybody in the public what AJ's job is, so everybody will know why he reviewed it.
AJ Turner is the district compliance specialist, and so we always are in contact with him about any safety and emergency issues that we have at our sites as well.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for Ms. Taunton concerning our emergency preparedness plans for 2015-2016? Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the early Head Start, Head Start Emergency Response Plans for 2015-2016 school year?
Second.
Thanks, Mr. Gallegos. We have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Parker. Is there further questions or comments from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Ms. Taunton, for being here. Our next item is item 14, to consider bid number 15-012 for our tennis dressing facilities at Central and Lakeview High School, and Mr. Richard Rigdon's here to help us with that this evening. Thanks, Mr. Rigdon, for being here.
The Capitol Project request this year included construction of new tennis dressing facilities at Lakeview and Central High Schools. Both campuses currently utilize portable buildings for their tennis dressing facilities. This bid, bid number 15-012, will provide for the removal and/or demolition of existing facilities and construction of new permanent structures at each campus. Also included will be a new parking lot for the tennis courts and facilities at Lakeview High School, along with some additional parking at Central. One of the things I did not include in here is a fire lane that will also be included at Lakeview's facility. We received eight bids on this project. All responses were scored by committee using our scoring criteria. Fares Metal Building Construction LLC was the bidder with the highest score and a cost of $1,997,500. Architects' fees will be an estimated $190,761.25, for a total project cost of $2,188,261.25. Administration is recommending approval, approving the bid from Fares Metal Buildings, Metal Building Construction LLC. Dr. Bright, Gary Donaldson, the architect, and myself met with Fares last Wednesday. One of the people that was present was their project manager. We asked various questions about their schedule, about work of a similar nature, their experience in working with schools, timelines for the project, and we had a pretty good discussion. Took about an hour. After the meeting, I feel very comfortable and very confident in making this recommendation. But with that, I am asking for your approval of Fares Metal Building to complete this project.
Thanks, Mr. Rigdon. Questions? Comments? I failed to ask you last week, how much, it says additional parking at Central, do we have any idea how much?
No, sir, not yet.
Okay.
We're going to have to see, it's going to be behind that building.
All right.
There's a little bit of space right off the fire lane, it may accommodate six or seven additional parking places.
That's what I was thinking, 10 max, it won't be any more than that.
No, it'll just be minimal.
Okay. Other questions or comments from Mr. Rigdon? If not, we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval, but I think it's worth pointing out that we had eight serious bidders on this project.
So we have a motion from Mr. Archer to approve, and we have a second from Mr. Gallegos. So our motion would be to approve the, a cost of $1,997,500 in addition to architects' fees estimated at $190,761.25, for a total project cost of $2,188,261.25. And I guess our original budget on this was, we talked about it being a million five, correct?
A billion five for the two buildings, yes, sir.
Right. So even though we had a number of bids, it did come out a little bit, and you know, when we do those, those are best guess estimates, you know, so.
And we figure that by square foot for the buildings, but then when you add in the other incidentals, such as the parking and the demolition, some of the other things that go along with it, it increases that per foot cost.
Okay. Yeah, and to Mr. Archer's point, we had a number of bidders, and all of them relatively close, so that shows you, I think it makes us feel really good about the particular bid we have, so. Other questions or comments from our board team? Any public comment concerning our motion? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Mr. Rigdon. Our next item I referred to earlier, which is consider nomination of candidates to serve on the Board of Directors of the Tom Green County Appraisal District. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Thanks, Mr. Dindell. We have a motion from Mr. Dindell and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve a resolution nominating five board members to serve a two-year term on the Tom Green County Appraisal District Board of Directors. And those individuals I mentioned earlier are all current members of the board. Those members are John Bagnone, John Kahn, Russell DeVore, Luis Gomez, and Bob Reeves, and all very experienced members of that, of our appraisal district. Any questions or comments concerning our motion? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. We're going to go into closed session to talk about sale of, or potential sale of real estate. I believe that's 551-072. And then we'll come back out and cover, well, we can cover the announcements now, we, after our meeting ends, Marta's got a packet or actually a schedule for us for our upcoming TASSA and TASB convention, which we'll be attending as a board team October 2nd through October 4th in Austin. And then our meeting dates in October are our financing pre-agenda workshop will take place on October 12th of 2015 at 5:30, and our regular board meeting will be two weeks rather than the normal one week following our pre-agenda workshop, and that's October 26th of 2015. So that should take care of our announcements, and then when we come back, I'm sure Marta will be glad to give us a schedule of events, and then we'll have a packet prepared as we head that way. So let's go into closed session under Texas Government Code 551-072 to discuss real property. All right, we've returned from our closed session, and we took no official board action in closed session, and obviously no resulting votes. So that really concludes our business for this evening. Marta did leave a list for our convention schedule of events upcoming. So we were talking about leaving the administration building at 1 o'clock on Thursday, October 1st. We can get down there and register either that night or the next morning, all day registration. And then they've got breakout sessions, which Marta will provide with our packets when we leave. And I guess that about covers our business for this evening. If there's hearing, no objection, we'll stand adjourned.